If you'll join me for the opening prayer and pledge. Lord, we're meeting today to conduct matters of business. God our hearts and our minds in the spirit of fairness, right thought and speech, impart your supreme wisdom upon our activities so that our affairs may reach a successful conclusion. Thank you for being our source of guidance today. Amen.
My pledge is to the God of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll go to approval of the agenda.
Move to approve.
Have a motion to approve. If we want, we want to add to schedule for the adoption of the zoning ordinance, so the regs and design review public hearing to schedule those. Do we need to add to vote to schedule it? Or we want to say we just put it for next month? Okay, then we're good to go. Okay, perfect. So we have a motion to approve the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, on favor?
Aye.
All right, we'll move to citizen comments. We have any citizens' comments tonight?
Not tonight.
Thank you. Move to approval of the minutes from the August 14th, 2018 regular meeting. First, we have a second, Mr. Anderson. Any discussion?
Yeah, do we have the minutes for that? I don't see them here at all.
Yes, we do.
Yeah, I don't have a copy, I'm sorry.
I'll give you mine.
That's okay. I'll just bow out of this voting, so.
Any additional discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Carries. Move to old business. Item one, Western Woods subdivision, phase four, request for subdivision acceptance and reduction to a maintenance bond, thirty-eight lots on 5.9 acres located on Wiley Circle, Spicer Court, and Colquitt Way. Property zone RS 5 PUD. Staff comments as discussed at the August 18th meeting, all improvements have been installed by a developer and the required as-built drawings were submitted. This item was deferred from that meeting to allow the developer and the city additional time to work on several items.
Mr. Chairman, do you mind if I step away for this moment?
All right, so do we have any update as far as that drainage or the things that were kind of same spot?
I haven't heard of any. I know that the, not the developer, but the builder had gone out and done a lot of individual site improvements as far as grading of lots and fixing some infrastructure as far as drainage. As far as the city and the developer working together and that with the neighboring property owner to remove the pipe from Wiley Circle, I haven't heard anything, so.
Does the developer know he's back on the agenda tonight?
We did not ask him to be here since there was no, there was apparent, it doesn't seem apparent that we've had any resolution, final resolution. I haven't heard from the city manager that, since he was supposed to be working with the developer and we hadn't heard anything, so. And I think he stepped out, so unfortunately, he's not here to give a, an update about whether or not he was able to make contact with the neighboring property owners.
I'd move to defer then.
Second.
The first and the second for deferment. Any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Jenkins. All right, we'll move to two new business. Preliminary plat development plan, Otter Creek Estates, six proposed lots on 8.8 acres, property located at 7329 Taylor Road, tax map 42 parcel 77, RS 40, single-family residential zoning district, property owned by Tony Cavender. Mr. Jenkins, if you could read those staff comments for me, please.
Yes, sir. Couple things here. Minimum lot building setback shown on the lots and in the typical lot layout graphic are incorrect and should reflect RS 40 zoning. Fifty feet front, twenty-five foot side, and twenty-foot rear. Show the lot width at the setback line. Each lot is required to be 150 feet wide. Surveyor's note number four shows incorrect setback information. Zoning district shown in site data block is incorrect and should read RS 40. And zoning district shown on map 042 parcel 78.00 is incorrect and should read RS 40. Existing sewer force main does not currently extend the length of the property and should be labeled as existing and proposed to reflect current conditions. And finally, the utility certification block should reference WADC, not the planning commission. And the last line referencing section 5.5 of the Fairview subdivision regulations should be removed in its entirety.
Sir?
Is there anybody here? Okay.
Go ahead, person.
Yeah. Okay.
I have one question. Was he aware of any of these discrepancies prior to tonight?
Yes, we sent the list of review comments. We always send it about a week before the plans are due back. And so the majority of these comments were sent, were sent to the, to the engineer of the project. It was not to Mr. Parker who's here tonight. It was Mr. Howes who had submitted the plans. And I will note that the second, the second comment, which is show the lot width at the setback line, that each lot is required to be 150 feet wide, that was not on there because the original submittal, they were supposed to add the setback, the correct setback information. And when it came back in, it was apparent, the lot lines that are on there and the set, and the setback lines are not actually correct for the, for the zone. So the, it became apparent at that point that they, it doesn't appear that all of these lots are going to meet the 150-foot lot width, so. But yes, they were, they were advised of them. Some of the comments were addressed, but not all of them in their entirety.
Mr. Parker, if you could join us, please, at the podium. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
You have some questions for the applicant?
Yeah, I was just wondering, are you going to be able to accommodate these and?
Oh, yeah, we can make any, any changes for sure that the staff wants us to make. And I think she's correct on, on the 150-foot wide parcel, we probably end up losing a lot.
So.
But everything else is just, yeah, it's just some comments that we can make on to the plat.
So y'all are willing to give up a lot to make it fit?
I'll have to go back and tell Tony that and, but, I mean, if that's the only way it can be recorded, I'm sure that's, that's what we'll have to do, so.
Any additional questions? I'd like to make a motion. Mr. Burks?
One thing I would say, I'm not a big fan of doing contingencies just because historically we have issues with the contingencies getting done. This is something I would probably consider a deferral on, to make sure it comes back, that it's done, it's done correctly. So I'll put that out there. Anyone else?
Can we make a deferral with recommendations or should we decline with recommendations to where it can be resubmitted?
I think a deferral is fine. He's been informed of what needs to be changed and basically just come up again. Hopefully, obviously, some or all of the changes in and reconsidered.
Okay, yes, sir.
Second.
We have a motion for referral. We have a second. Any additional discussion?
I'd just like to make sure we state the deferral with the recommendations, staff recommendations.
Perfect. Any additional discussion?
I didn't hear what the?
You just wanted to make sure that the referral included the staff recommendations.
Let me ref, if you'll withdraw your second, I'll restate my, I'll withdraw my motion. I'll make a motion that we defer to the next meeting with all the staff recommendations, changes being made to the preliminary plat to be resubmitted.
A motion?
Oh, second.
We have a second, Mr. Power.
I think, Mr. Owen, did you have something you needed to add?
Sorry, Mr. Owen.
Yeah, just, just so I'm clear, Mr. Parker, the intended sewer service is step tanks that will be connected to the eventual Otter Creek Step System.
I believe that's, is accurate. Is it connecting to the force main that's across the street?
Yeah, I think the force main is extended from that mangram.
Okay. I just needed some clarity on that. Thank you.
Okay, and so in statement, so that was listed in your city referrals or is that something added that you added that last time about the setback? Did that include, did we get everything included, just to be clear for the record?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Any additional discussion? We have a motion and a second for deferment. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Mr. Parker. Item three, new business. Discussion item, standard sidewalk policy, variance procedure, and fee in lieu fund.
Mr. Chairperson.
Yes, sir, Mr. Burks.
I asked that this discussion take place and Kristen put it on the agenda so that we could discuss it. We have some sidewalks to nowhere in the city, which is really bizarre. There's a couple over in Western Woods. There's some over on, I think it was the Horn Tavern. We have three or four homes that have sidewalks just to each other. And I'm sure it's very neighborly, but it doesn't really make sense, especially when you consider the fact that the city has to maintain those sidewalks. So I think what we really should be looking at is a sidewalk fund where we find a situation appropriate to allow variance and determine if we allow that variance, how much do you pay into the sidewalk fund that we could then use to build other sidewalks or repair and maintain some of the current sidewalks that we have? Instead of having a sidewalk that's three houses long in the middle of nowhere.
I think, just for reference, that one, there were some big parcels to left and right. So when it was approved, I think it was kind of the thought, maybe one-day connectivity. When do you do it, when do you don't? Sometimes when we've talked about the fund, it seems like it's more of a, it's a higher cost to pay in than to what the developer would be to install. And sometimes they'll say, you know what, I'm just going to throw those sidewalks in. So it's kind of wishy-washy there, but no, I think it's a good idea. And when I saw this on the agenda, I thought it was going to be as far as standards and things like that, a makeup of it, so.
Well, and that, Kristen, I believe needs to be part of the conversation as well, but we at least need to have this part in. Because again.
Have the opportunity.
We need that option. It needs to be reasonable. What would the actual cost to put a sidewalk in be? We didn't necessarily need to be an arbitrary number. We can probably find out what that number is. What's the average cost? There you are. And if it's correct, then in that situation, I think that went on Horn Tavern, I can never remember the name of it. We'd be able to pay to have that connected if there are those two large parcels on the other side that are developed. We could do it and have it match. Those are my thoughts. It just doesn't really make sense. And I understand why it was done in that situation, but it could be 10, 15 years. And is that sidewalk really usable? Is it going to be there?
If you use a fund and you use a generic amount, are you going to use a bid standards that you would find for bidding on commercial concrete work? Or, because those things are totally different. And so to me, a fund based off of a generic cost can really get expensive or inexpensive. You know, if you're in an area where you got rock or you don't have rock, bidding projects like that, normally you have a base book that you bid cost of items from. And that may or may not apply here. That, to me, could really be a complicated thing to come up with a justifiable number for a, I'm all for the fund, but I don't see how you can really come up with one based on a residential subdivision. And you.
A concrete number, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, a concrete number.
No pun intended. I thought we had, we've talked, that we have something. This is, we, here's the thing. I can't tell you how many times we sit there with the Horn Tavern and the Toddies and they wanted to pay into the sidewalk and fund in lieu of. I could tell you a thousand and it wasn't. So were they just asking for a variance and we didn't have it? I mean, I can tell you several times that this has come up.
Mayor, my, my best recollection is the language is in the subregs currently. The issue, I believe, was there's, and we'd need to talk with Tom Doherty on this, but I don't think there is a line item in the city's budget that establishes this fund and therefore keeps those funds separate from anything else. So I think that's where the pitfall was, that the language is in the subregs, but there was no provision established in the city's budget that established that fund.
Okay.
I don't think it sets out the amount either.
Correct, it does not.
It's just kind of, like, there may be something there, but, and I understand the challenges of trying to figure it out, but at the same time, there's such, there are situations where we just don't want sidewalks. Western Woods is a good example because the sidewalks are in the middle of people's driveways that they can't technically park on because they're blocking a sidewalk. But at the same time, we need to be able to recover that if we're going to allow them to waive that and for the best use of the city in other sidewalks. So there has, I'm sure other municipalities have this and they have figured it out. And I'm okay with plagiarism. And we can go see what Davison County, other parts of Williamson County do. I'm sure this has been accomplished. There you go.
It's in the, it's in the report that I gave you.
Yeah.
And I apologize, I hadn't had time to read it yet.
That's okay, it's in front of you. Based on your request to put this on, I did put together, and I'm not going to read it all. You can take it home. There is a lovely graphic attached to your sheet, which does have an aerial view of Hickory Springs, the five-lot Totty subdivision on Horn Tavern that Commissioner Burks has referenced. I believe it was 560 feet of linear frontage there that they had on Horn Tavern, where they did put in a five-foot sidewalk because the requirement was in the subdivision regulations. I do recall that there was discussion, I wasn't here, but I remember reading in the minutes about the practicality of that and variances and whatnot. And so at any rate, just briefly, Article 4, 104 of the subregs does state you have to have sidewalks on both sides of the street in all new residential subdivisions. Any subdivision that's proposed that has frontage on an existing street also has to have the sidewalk on the frontage. All residential sidewalks are proposed to be five feet. Doesn't matter if it's a collector's street, a local street, an arterial. They're all just five feet in width. Technically, and this, I think, may conflict with one of the graphics that we usually use for the standard street detail. It says in Article 4 that there should be a five-foot grassy area or tree lawn, as they call it, in between the edge of the roadway and the sidewalk, which is probably where the street trees are supposed to go. A lot of times we see a two-foot strip, so. And then, of course, all the sidewalks are supposed to be ADA compliant. Now, because the sidewalk requirement is in the subregs, it's completely within the authority of the planning commission. If they wanted to grant a variance when they see a subdivision come before them, usually we justify it based on topographical reasons. So if you've got drainage ditches, steep slopes, et cetera, that would make it difficult from a practical engineering standpoint. That's a good reason to be able to grant a variance. There is actually a provision in the subregs, 4-104.5, which is in here. Waivers and alternative pedestrian ways, which I'm guessing we have never invoked in the, in the past, but it says developers and the planning commission may reach alternative arrangements concerning sidewalks where strict compliance with the provisions would be unfair or cause an undue hardship due to previously approved plats and/or development plans. Such alternative provisions may include, one, payment to a city fund for construction of the sidewalks by the city at this location at a later date, or, two, the actual construction of sidewalks at another location. And in the absence of mutual agreement, the developer shall construct the sidewalks in the manner provided herein. So to that point, the city recently had two subdivisions come before us where the developers both said, hey, my previous phases didn't have sidewalks, like in Fernville, the Fernville condos. And we said, well, we want them in the new phase. Or Sweet Bar Springs, where they were only required on one side of the street. And so they said, you know, it's, it's not going to create a harmonious overall development pattern. They didn't want to do it. You know, the planning commission, and with, with Sweet Brier, they came, you guys came to an agreement to put them in various places that it was decided was a good idea. Now, the whole alternative provision, one, where it says you can pay into a city fund, we don't have a fund. It's never been created. We would probably need, and this is discussed later, you know, we could easily pass an ordinance that goes into the municipal code that states, you know, hereby, hereby created is a sidewalk fund for the construction and maintenance of any sidewalk project that's in the public right-of-way. It would authorize the planning commission to allow somebody to pay into the fund with specific circumstances. And then it would also put, it would also basically state what that, what the equation is, whether it's, you know. Where I used to work, we had one where it was 375 a square foot, sorry, a linear foot. So 375 times five, because all the, all the sidewalks are supposed to be five feet, times whatever the linear footage is. So if you had under that equation, you know, 1,000 feet of sidewalk that was not installed would, and it's expensive, would cost a developer $18,750. Now, you certainly could come up with an amount that is more representative of whatever is on a bid book. I mean, potentially, you could, you could adjust it every year. You know, there's certainly options as far as that goes. Going back to the, what's currently on the books, the alternative provision number two, where it says that instead of putting in a sidewalk here in Hickory Springs, you can put it somewhere else. It's an interesting proposition, but I don't know how, it seems awfully tricky. I mean, there's, you know, liability, the quality of the work and the other concerns, how we determine, you know, the nature of the project, et cetera. So probably would want to remove that, actually, from the subregs if we're moving forward. But then again, there are other scenarios that exist that we've looked at recently, like the Kenny Taylor one on Taylor Road, where the developer asked for a variance because he did not want to create a sidewalk to nowhere, because it was only for six lots. There was no network in the area. And, you know, similarly, the other issue that we had with the Kenny Taylor one was the property was in the city, but the right-of-way was not. So it would be an undue burden, really, to request that the developer go and work it out with the county to get approval because really, we don't have any authority. If the county says no, then we don't have anything to, you know, to stand on. So at any rate, the whole point is that I think it would be a good plan to come up with some, you know, whether or not the board sees fit to create a fund. It seems like it would sort of level the playing field because, you know, sidewalks are expensive. Somebody could say, well, you're making me do one here, you're not making him do it over there. The city also loses that infrastructure that we want. So we could sort of treat everybody fairly across the board. If it's feasible and it makes sense to put it in, put it in. And if it doesn't, we could potentially get money to put in to a fund to fix, fix sidewalks in the right-of-way, extend them where we need them, et cetera. So there's a bunch of information in there that you can read over and we can certainly research it, discuss it more in the, in the coming months, you know, at the, at the will of the planning commission.
Yes, ma'am.
Just to give you a little insight, the reason they decided to put the sidewalks in the reg is they were trying, trying to have a little foresight that, that these would eventually connect together. It's great, but you could have to look at these holes for 20 years. And I think some of the, some of the things that we need to consider is once the overlay map and the comprehensive plan is done, you know, maybe that's something you could say, okay, this is growth areas or whatever. But we really don't know, we'll never know who's going to sell the property, who's going to develop their property. And there's not a good guideline. But it's just having that forethought of what you want your community to look like. I know as far as city planning, it makes it difficult because we do have to spend, we, it does cost the city to maintain the sidewalks. But it's just really about what you want your community to look like, having that forethought of, you know, because, yeah, we may, Mr. Mangram came and he wanted to, he was the first person to want to build houses, you know, on Old Nashville Highway. So now, look how many more, now all of a sudden we have another and another. Well, if you look at it like a potential growth area, they could all connect. And so if we start letting people buy out of it, then we're taking away a vision. And so I just kind of think we need to take that in consideration. I do, I was here during the Horn Tavern and the, them requiring the Toddies to build a sidewalk to nowhere. And it, you know, makes no sense, but since then, we've had three other subdivisions, at least two on that road. So eventually, you know, they could connect. So it's just something that as a planning commission, you need to take that in consideration. And maybe with some of the comprehensive plan stuff, we could come up with, you know, a vision. But the ideal's good. I mean, people, it's, sidewalks are desirable. I mean, look at all the people that use our sidewalks. And so everything that I go to about bringing people into your community that they're wanting a, you know, walkable, livable community and that makes your community a desirable place. So I just think you have to take that into consideration. To just say, these sidewalks to nowhere are ugly, yes, they might be for, you know, 20 years. But eventually, as the city grows, and if, if it's a targeted growth area, that would be having forethought. And that would be planning. So that's just something I think y'all need to, you know, just consider as you talk about it.
Sir, Mr. Burks?
And I don't disagree with anything the mayor's just said, but I think one other consideration we have is, and I'll need an opinion on this. If we have a sidewalk that sits there for 10, 15 years and the ADA compliance codes change and we connect to that sidewalk, do we not have to bring that, that part we're connecting to up to code? Or we're allowed to keep it too different? Good. That was, that was one concern I had.
There's no mandate, there wouldn't. Currently, there's no mandate in place that you have to retrofit all your sidewalks to the current, any current ADA standards. Any new sidewalks that are constructed, you would need to meet the current standards, but, perfect.
Sir?
On, right now, we've got a few sidewalks to nowhere. Okay, if we let these guys opt out and they don't put one there, and then a few years down the road, somebody builds a subdivision next to them and they put sidewalks there, then we left out 300 feet.
But we would capture funds to eventually put it there or somewhere else, or, it's kind of the thought.
And I, I just, I've just seen what funds, what happens to funds. And if they're not just really locked down and you don't put every restriction on the world, on them, funds get away from you. And the funds.
This would be in a designated fund.
I've seen others designated funds in this city not end up where they were supposed to be.
I understand a lot of those people go to prison. So hopefully.
As far as I know, none of them's in prison right now, so.
Go check Birmingham, you'll see.
Mr. Mills?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just a couple of things. I know y'all thrown out a lot of proposals and you certainly have a lot to think about, but the way I read these subdivision regs, you only have two options. And I don't think that it's quite in line with what you want. You either get to have the developer build sidewalks somewhere else, which I completely agree. which I completely agree with the city planner that that is a no. Don't do that legally and just otherwise. But two, it specifically says that you would have to take that money now and decide to put it in later in that specific location. That doesn't give you the flexibility, I think, you need. Because the other thing that we're looking at with all of this, that may need to be fleshed out with an amendment, is when you're looking at giving someone a variance, you're doing it for specific reasons. You know, I think, Mr. Power, you said, "Opt-out." I do not think you should adopt an "opt-out" policy. I think it should be a hard-line variance policy of, "The geography does not allow this. Therefore, you don't have to do sidewalks in this limited, exceptional circumstance. You pay us money, and we will, maybe if there's three subdivisions, there's a gap in there, we'll go fill that gap, make it one long sidewalk somewhere else." I think that's more the vision, at least I got from Commissioner Burks. So, while there are sidewalks to nowhere, if you're building on that and connecting all of them, eventually, a fund might help fill in the gaps. But we're going to have to rework the way this is read, because as of right now, you don't have any discretion. And it will have to become a budget item. It will have to be its own fund, and so there's a number of steps that have to be taken. I think, I thought I had one other point, but I think that'll be it for me.
Well, and I really thought, now, I didn't know it didn't have a budget, but I really thought that it has always been an option. I don't know of that point. I don't know that anybody's paid in. That would be interesting to know, but that I recall. But what's happened is, the developer normally always just does the sidewalk, because it's cheaper than, you know, paying into the fund, because whatever calculations. But apparently, we didn't have a calculation either. So, I think cleaning it up and actually getting a line item in the budget would give the option. It doesn't mean that you're going to give them the variance. It just means you have the option, and you do have the opportunity to take the funds in. So, it sounds like, you know, with some of the suggestions made, you know, tonight, those would be a good direction, just to kind of clean things up. But, you know, to sit there and say, "That means no, you don't have to do sidewalks," I think you need to take the whole spiel I said about, you know, the direction behind it of eventually, you know, that they could connect. So, you know, and that would have to be a recommendation maybe we made to the board if we wanted the line item added.
Well, one thing, I would say, if we was going to do this, and we was going to offer them to buy out or variance or whatever, it needs to be a little bit painful to them. Because if you don't, I mean, if we give somebody a variance here, then somewhere very similar, and we don't give them a variance, and next thing you know, Fairview's in the sidewalk building business, and I don't think we have staff to build sidewalks. We probably do not have the equipment to build sidewalks. So, that's where that I, I mean, when I hear that the city is always, I mean, and not from anybody's fault, but they are short-staffed in a lot of places. And now, all of a sudden, we're going to say, "Well, if you don't build a sidewalk, we will take it upon ourselves to build a sidewalk." We can't build a sidewalk. I mean, the closest one is sitting back there, probably could build a sidewalk, and I don't, I think he's taking care of the park and some other things, so I don't think he has time to go out and build sidewalks.
Well, and, Mr. Powers, I don't think the intention is that the city's going to have staff build a sidewalk. It would be, we get enough funds in, once we get some flexibility. And I agree that it seems more like an impact fee, kind of, now. Once we have that flexibility, we would pull that money together, say, "Okay, let's put in a mile of sidewalks right here to connect with something else," and we would bid that project out. We wouldn't try to do that ourselves. Another thing I would say is, I think, I shouldn't use Horn Tavern, because that's probably not the best example, because there are other projects there that one day may come to fruition and connect. I think Western Woods might be a better example, where they were required to put sidewalks in, and it's their driveway. Now, granted, that's how it was designed. However, we're creating inconvenience to the homeowners. I mean, I don't think anyone can legally park in their driveway, because they're blocking a sidewalk on that, is it on Wiley, that back strip?
Yeah, it's that west section.
That might be a better example, because that's never going to really connect anything else. It's just inside that subdivision, it's...
That was going to be the town center overlay. That was going to be a huge connection. But it's just the oversight of, things change in phases, you know.
Well, and it's pretty unappealing looking, the big gap and the drainage. It didn't...
And if you look at it, it's not, doesn't appear to be to ADA compliance, some of the sidewalks are, they're bad. I'm assuming they settled, or something happened. They weren't hopefully built that way.
They were.
But that's...
And we...
That's unfortunate. But that's more the example, I think, makes more sense, something like that. The other thing I think we need to look at when we talk about sidewalks, we probably should start thinking about, in the requirements, do we have that grass strip between the curb and the sidewalk? Because hopefully, we never see a recurrence of what's on 100, where the mailbox is in the sidewalk. The state contractor created a sidewalk that's in violation of the ADA, as they made it ADA compliant. Makes absolutely no sense. So, if we can require that grass strip for mailboxes and those things, I think that would be very helpful, and I think that's something that we should also consider. We probably just need to redo our entire sidewalk ordinance. Sorry about that word. Because it's got to be better. And if we don't require it, they're not going to do it, so.
I think one of the things that, all of this is, as you guys are starting to see, all of your regulations are interrelated. As an point being, by establishing a minimum, absolute minimum front setback in planned developments of 20 feet, we have created, or we will now no longer allow, that situation that you described, in which cars would be hanging over driveways. There's at least enough depth behind the sidewalk, and before you get to a garage of 20 feet, to where any standard conventional vehicle would be able to park. You couldn't double park, you'd be out on the street.
While you're saying that, is the 20-foot setback included in the 10-foot right-of-way of a 5-foot grass strip, 5-foot sidewalk? So, is it 10 plus 20? So, it's 30, essentially?
Correct, correct. Yeah, so the 20 feet would be starting from the back of the sidewalk to the structure itself.
Excellent.
Just real quick, playing devil's advocate, the, there is a balance there, because if the fee in lieu of is structured in such a way that it's two, or three, or four times the cost of the developer putting it in at his development, the argument that I've always heard from developers is, "Why would I pay twice as much in money for an amenity that's going in another part of town, when I could pay half the price and it benefit my development?" So, that's the balance. If there is a desire by the city to see that fund build, then you have to, you would, I would suggest that you set that, whatever that formula is, as close or comparable as you can to what a true cost to a private developer might be. Otherwise, if it's so far to the expensive side, 99% of the time, they're going to choose to just put it in where it is, and you're going to end up with the same sidewalks to nowhere, if that's something that you're not desiring.
The other thing I think we need to look at, since we're talking about it, we like street trees in this city. And in essence, we're putting in trees right on our sidewalks that are going to create problems and destroy our sidewalks. So, we may want to consider backing away from street trees and more to landscaping. Still have greenery, but something that's not going to cause the maintenance issues as those roots grow and whatever.
We're still addressing that, just from my personal experience, by designating certain types of trees, because oaks, things like that, those roots are going to bust out. There are other types of trees that get higher than 12 feet, and through that...
And I believe there's been an attempt to do that, but there's still that possibility. Will, what do you think about that?
I got one question. If we go back to the sidewalk fund, a lot of municipalities have separate funds set up for various things, but it's collected through the permit for the housing and for the development, instead of, say, trying to hit the developer on a fee because of the certain length of it's not necessary to have sidewalks. If you want a sidewalk maintenance fund, you should designate it, in my opinion, in the permitting side of the thing.
Actually, I think you have an excellent idea. In addition to, I think there should be a fee, if that's possible. I don't know if y'all could jump in, because that actually would eliminate some of the problem with maintenance, and I think that would basically set that money aside in that subdivision or area where you could do it. Obviously, we are not very good, as a city, of maintaining sidewalks. You can look up and down Highway 100 and that. So, maybe having that forethought of just giving some kind of fee in the beginning doesn't change the fact that we probably need to address those lots that do not, you know, are not very, I can't even think of the word. But anyway, there's some lots that just doesn't work, like Commissioner Burks was talking about in Western Woods. But, so that may be another, while we have those conversations, something else we would want to do.
Should we be a cleaner way to do it, though?
Yeah, but I think in addition, I actually think you need both. I think it's an excellent ideal, if we could do that, is to have a fee, but then also, if they don't put in the sidewalk, they have to pay into the fund.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but shouldn't city maintenance be covered, like city infrastructure, shouldn't that be covered under, like, city property taxes? Like, each resident pays property taxes. I think that should go towards maintenance of things, to turn around and ask a developer to pay an extra fee or a penalty of some sort for us to maintain sidewalks. I don't think that's fair. I think that's our responsibility as citizens, to maintain our sidewalks, not to have a developer punished for that. And then also, like, jumping off the word "punished", Mr. Power, as you were talking earlier, trying to make the developer feel like some sort of financial pain or burden for not wanting to put in sidewalks, I don't think that's like a good spirit to have for us. I'm not trying to cause pain for developers financially. It's just more of if the sidewalk isn't feasible, if it's not going to be beneficial to the residents in that moment, that we just say, "All right, you can either, instead of paying for building sidewalks now, just pay us what you would pay, and then we'll just put that aside for a sidewalk fund, and we'll build them when they are necessary." Does that make sense? So, it's not a pain thing. It's just, you either pay now, or you pay us, and we'll build it later. It's not a punishment.
I guess my thing wasn't that maybe painful was the wrong word, but I know that if you make things where they can pay the city a little bit of money and forget about it, a lot of them will get forgotten about, because it's just something else for them to do. And if they're not making money on it, if they can pay their way out of it, they will a lot. And I think our goal in this city is to have sidewalks, and not to really have it to where it's easy or cheaper to get a variance. And once we let, once one variance goes through because of something, I mean, as in the Western Woods. If that was to happen again, then somebody comes up and says, "Well, you gave Western Woods this. Now, we expect our variance." And if we don't, then we get into certain legal issues there. I'm not saying to make it where it's going to cost twice as much if they don't put in a sidewalk. But if we put in a number, and if we don't go back and redo that every year, let's say you pay me $1,000 this year for a sidewalk, whatever, I mean, I'm just using $1,000. In five years, can you still build that sidewalk for $1,000? That's my question.
Yeah, so then I guess someone smarter than myself would have to take into some sort of a, what do you call?
Bid book.
Yeah. Inflation, some sort of inflation, like construction inflation into account.
If it costs $1,000 to build that sidewalk, and we just say, "Give us $1,000," then I think there would be, become more of a trend to try not to build it. If it costs, if it's $1,000 to build a sidewalk, but it's going to be $1,200 if you don't want to build it, then I think you're not going to ask for the variance quite as fast. That's, I'm not saying to double it, triple it. I'm not trying, I'm not, I don't want anybody being pain. That was the wrong word. I'm sorry that I used that word.
I'm glad you clarified.
But, all I'm saying is, let's not make it so easy that every time anybody comes in here, that they ask us for a variance. And let's not make it so cheap, that it's cheap, just as cheap to do that, and not have to worry about getting it inspected, and not have to worry about any of these things. Because I promise you, they have to bring usually a separate crew in to just build the sidewalks and do curbs.
Thank you for that. And just another quick thought, too, though, is if we build a, if we have a subdivision, build a sidewalk that's, the purpose of the sidewalk, as it gets, is from A to B, right? And if there's no B for us to really need to get to, like the sidewalks to nowhere you keep mentioning, there's no benefit in even having that sidewalk now. Then later on, whenever there becomes a need, and we actually, like, create, if a developer builds a new sidewalk later on, now we've got a sidewalk back-to-back. One, it probably needs new maintenance done, and like, maybe rebuilt, and another one, it's brand-new. So, then we end up doubling our work at the same time, too, because now we're going to have to repair the sidewalk that actually is new, like, necessary now. I just think we shouldn't have put stuff in unless there's an actual need for it in that moment.
So, real quick, I think we've beat around the bush a little bit, but when I saw this on the agenda, I thought of makeup of sidewalk, and so I was going to discuss about having like a sidewalk detail, like kind of a street detail. The City of Franklin has a great sidewalk detail. One thing the City of Franklin requires is a root protector, and so it goes against the sidewalk to prevent the roots that go through it over to the sidewalk. They make up the concrete of 3,000 PSI, they have expansion joint of every 25 feet, where we probably wouldn't have the buckling on 100. And so, maybe have a detail to where we can have longer, long-term, better sidewalks, less maintenance, to prevent things like the roots coming through, and to prevent the buckling and things like that. And so, maybe, maybe we should have a sidewalk workshop, maybe, if we want to really dig into it more.
I think that's an excellent idea. I'll show up late to know I'm talking about that.
There's already standards for sidewalks out there.
Yeah.
It has some great standards. Franklin's is a great standard, where we can adopt something that we can implement that's going to give us a better product for the city to take over eventually.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea, too. Who would have known we had so much conversation about it. But I would be, I'm really interested on this fee issue. Does other cities have such a fund where they, or not true, but for the sidewalk fund, that they charge a fee? And so, that's not us creating a new fee. It's just, we don't currently do it.
No, this fee that I, that's on your, on the back sheet, is a fee that exists currently that I saw was paid on a number of occasions. It's not any different than paying into the tree fund. You know, the medical building paid $43,000 because they didn't want to plant or couldn't plant trees. So...
Mr. Owen?
What I'm asking about...
You're talking about not a fee in lieu of installation. You're just talking about a permanent sidewalk maintenance fee of some sort, at building permit issuance or something.
Yeah, have you seen that?
I think you're getting borderline close to it, that, something like that, or structured in that manner, to be classified as an adequate facilities tax, or an impact fee, or something along that. Yeah, so I, he would need to do some work on that.
So, an impact fee would be more, well, I, my thought process now is about our sidewalk and the maintenance as it comes up, because we do have some issues. I mean, you can look up and down Highway 100, and there's some major issues with our sidewalks. So, how do we come about? And see, me personally, I don't want to tax the citizens more, so it makes sense for, if a developer comes in, and we're lower than most cities for developers. So, to me, if there was a way to pass that on to the developer, it would make more sense than to have to raise property taxes than, or to do some other kind of tax. So, I don't know. It just would be an interesting discussion on the sidewalk, is that potential. You know, I definitely think we need the line item, because our, we already have it saying that they could... because our... we already have it saying that they could, you know, do lieu of. So we just need to come up with that formula and get a line item. And then it'll be up to the planning commission, you know, you know, whether the situation is warranted or not, so.
I think greater standards on sidewalks, too, are going to prevent maintenance where you're not going to have as much of troublesome with them. Maybe we can try and write something up that kind of incorporates what we have now to put that fee in place. Mr. Owen uses, he uses a sidewalk rate when he does, sets a bond. So he has a number that he's using that would cost for estimation of sidewalks. And maybe he can use that number based on what it is at the time or where the options there. If it comes to us and where it cannot work, we have that fund in place. We have things set up, so.
When we have construction plans come through for subdivisions, the sidewalk detail that is included in those construction plans, I do review that and make sure it's of a certain standard that will provide for a good quality installation with the hope that, you know, the long-term maintenance isn't overly burdensome based on a poor detail. Just for everyone's clarity, the sidewalks on Highway 100, that if you didn't know, those were part of TDOT's widening program when they came through several years ago. That was TDOT's contractor. The city had zero input or authority or ability to inspect or review or hold anyone accountable in those scenarios. Generally, what occurs is when there is state right-of-way that goes through a corporate boundary, the state will have a contract agreement with the local corporate entity, municipal entity, for maintenance of their right-of-way within the city boundaries. And generally, hidden over in the small print of that agreement, usually everyone just thinks about mowing the right-of-way if it's in your city limits. But over in the small print, it also includes sidewalk maintenance. So while it's one of those double-edged swords, it was great to have the street widened and new sidewalks put in, but once they were installed and accepted by TDOT and that one-year warranty, I assume there was a one-year warranty with TDOT on the work by the road contractor. After that, then it becomes the city's responsibility to maintain it. So that's kind of where you were given a bag of nails, so to speak, and are kind of seeing that that's going to need to be addressed sooner rather than later.
And thank you for clarifying that. No way did I... I wasn't meaning that, but that's good information for a board. But it is our responsibility to maintain them now. As Mr. Owen stated, we have long passed our year.
The only other thing I would mention is, I think my recommendation would be to only consider a fee in lieu of scenario along existing public right-of-way. If there's a new subdivision coming in that has new streets that are being constructed, then I... there's really no reason at all, really even topography or otherwise, in which sidewalks can't be part of the new right-of-way that's cleared and the road that's constructed. So I think we're all on the same page as far as that goes. Just wanted to clarify that.
Mr. Burks. One thing I would want to point out, and Mayor, I understand what you're saying. You don't want to have citizens have to continue to maintain this. But when we put a maintenance fee on to a developer, we're putting that cost on to citizens. Because that developer's not going to eat that cost. Any fee that we put on a developer gets shuffled back to the person buying the home. So it's still going to be a tax on the citizen, unfortunately. I wish the developers would say, hey, yeah, I'm going to eat this cost. It'd be nice. But unfortunately, we know they won't. But I agree with what Mr. Owens was just saying. New constructed roads are really no excuse because they're constructing a road. It should be constructed for a sidewalk as well. But I think the issue really comes in more on the existing roads that we have. And if... this is something we just, we need to look at. We need to start thinking about, which is why I'm really glad, really glad Kristin put it on for tonight. I know it was a lot. Maybe next time, we can talk about something easy like signs. That's a whole nother two-day discussion, so.
Alright, so no more discussion. We'll move into bonds and letters of credit.
So are we... I'm sorry. We just had a really long discussion about something. So what have we decided at all? Like, have we made any progress here? Or did we just talk for our own sake of talking?
We talked for our own sake, workshop.
We'll schedule a workshop.
Okay, sidewalk workshop.
Talk about sidewalks. Alright, we'll move to item four, bonds and letters of credit. The meeting placed church. Site performance bond to cover the site in the amount of 22,000. Planning commission set the bond at the June 9, 2015 meeting. Bond expires September 15, 2018. So you guys update. Mr. Owen, did you visit there today?
I was. Based on the site observations today, the majority of the site has been stabilized and the former area that was gravelled for parking, that was not shown on the site plan, the approved site plan, has since been removed and seeded and strawed. The pond, the detention pond itself, the internal parts of the pond could use some seed and straw on it. But I don't see that there's any potential harm to neighboring or adjacent properties as a result of that particular part of the development not being stabilized. The sidewalls of the pond, the exterior sidewalls, and the outlet structure itself appear to be in good order. So unless there's other items that I'm not aware of that the city planner may have, I might suggest that that bond be released.
So the lower gravel lot is gone now. When do they do that?
Like last week. And amazingly, the grass has grown over the door.
And staircase and everything is gone that was down there?
Staircase has been removed from its usable position. It's laying close to where it used to be installed.
So what happens if we remove this and next week they put it all back?
At that point, it'd be no different than any other site in the city, constructing something that had not, they had not submitted, submitted a plan to be approved for that requires a plan to be submitted.
Is any explanation of why it has taken so long? And where are they going to park now?
I have not been in communication with anyone.
I think the overflow was a kind of after, after-the-fact development. You know, they were growing. I think it was also partly because they... At one point, actually, in the recent past, he had, the pastor had approached me about, could they concrete it? Because I said, you can't, you cannot leave it as gravel. We don't allow gravel parking lots. And he was going to discuss with his engineer. You know, I told him he'd have to revisit the site plan and the drainage calculations. He wanted to, you know, have it drain into the... There's almost like a valley in between the apartments next door. And I said, you know, depending on what your engineer says, you may be able to do that. And then I don't know if it was cost or what, but they decided to just go back to what the original plan showed, so.
I just wondered if they're going to be parking there in the grass now?
I think that, well, it hasn't been expressly stated to me, but I think they are, I think they understand that what the city was expecting, so.
When they took the steps out, did they fill that little place with rocks or anything, or just dirt there?
I did not look that closely.
I drive by there and I used to see that little steps would...
It's right in the middle of all the ripraps, so, I mean.
So I just wondered if they completed the riprep there.
I want to say that they did, but I don't recall right at the moment at that specific area. I just saw the steps sitting up over next to where they were, so.
Additional questions or anyone like to make a motion?
Okay, so do you think that it's good enough for releasing a bond? Or should we, I mean...
Yes, I think it's in, as it sits today, I think the site is physically in general conformance to the approved site plan. And technically, holding a bond under the guise of they potentially may violate that in the future is probably not a wise thing to do, so.
I'd like to make a motion.
I'd like to go ahead and make the motion to release the bond for the meeting place church.
First.
Second.
Second. Any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Much carries. Item five, First Baptist Church of Fairview. Revocable standby letter of credit to cover the site in the amount of 15,000. Planning commission has set the bond at the September 13, 2016 meeting. Lot expires September 15, 2018.
That site has been stabilized and appears to be in general conformance with the approved site plan and would recommend a release of that bond as well.
Mr. Chairperson, I probably should recuse myself from this.
Anyone like to make a motion?
Move to approve.
Move to approve what, to release it?
Yeah, to release. Well, no, the bond, yeah, to release the bond.
Motion to release the bond. We have a second. Any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Much carries? Alright, we will move to reports of discussion. Start with city planner, Ms. Stansfield.
Nothing really. I just, I appreciate the discussion on sidewalks. I look forward to engaging in more debate as we move forward. So I think we've got, you know, some good potential to put something that we all want, you know, in place, so, that's it.
And so we'll get a hearing and everything scheduled for the final regs and ordinances?
We shall, yes.
Ms. Engineer, Ms. Owen.
I have nothing further.
Thanks, sir. City attorney, Mr. Mills.
Nothing further, thank you.
Thanks, sir. Any communication from the planning commission members? Ms. Slaughter?
As it is 9/11, I just want to say thank you to all of our first responders. And just remember that. And also remember that I'm a family that has a lot of birthdays and anniversaries in September. And this day actually falls on several birthdays. And to remember that while we're remembering something that is so significant, that we also have room to enjoy and celebrate the things that we've got going on now, too.
Thank you. Ms. Qualls? Mr. Anderson? Mr. Power? Mr. Burks?
Just thank you for the lively discussion. I know it's as boring as watching mud dry. But it's something that's small and simple that really can affect a lot of what we do. And unfortunately, there's a lot of these little, small, simple things that we're going to have to look at over the next year, two, three, four, five years. So look forward to that. Thank you.
Sir, Mayor Carroll?
Yes, I agree. I know it seems like we talked a long time and there wasn't anything done but a workshop. But welcome to government. I will, I would like to say that sometimes these discussions are important here because the citizens can watch it on TV. So when we do workshops, we, you know, they're not televised. So it is a good thing to do is to have this open discussion. And then also, it gives the city staff a direction. But knowing what, even though we didn't say we're going to do this, but then they know what to research. They've sat here and heard us and some of our interests. So when it comes time that we can have a workshop, all the research and the data is put in front of us and we can have those discussions. And then time it comes onto the agenda, we have an educated decision and talked about every aspect. And then as tonight, we just kept adding. So we took a line item and took it many different directions. But by doing that, we've spoken out loud of what we think's important. And then also, it'll make that workshop more productive. So it's not for not, you know. And so I guess that's it tonight. Thank you.
Jenkins?
Honored to be here.
Alright, great discussion tonight. I agree. Thank you guys very much, Mr. Owen and team. Thank you guys for working so hard to getting the sub-regs and orses, everything lined up. It's been a long time coming and very exciting to see a clean bill coming through there. But we'll adjourn the meeting.